Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonas.
Here.
Olson. Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Here, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a republic, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for October 28th. Can I get a motion to approve? And a second, please.
Second.
A motion from Remley and a second from Johnson. Carl, get a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonas.
Aye.
Rux.
Here. Or aye.
Mayor Shawnaman.
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got an official proclamation for the American Diabetes Month, November 2019. I'll read that. Whereas the United States, in the United States, more than 30 million people, approximately 82,000 in South Dakota, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, including heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. Whereas, an additional 84 million in the United States are at risk of developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas, approximately every 21 seconds, someone in the United States is diagnosed with diabetes. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. And now, therefore, be it resolved, I Travis Shawnaman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do hereby proclaim November 2019 to be American Diabetes Month in South Dakota. I encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and be part of the American Diabetes Association's movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. We have a few representatives from the group in the audience. Would anyone like to say a word? Otherwise, thank you very much for being here. Could you gentlemen pass this along so that they could get their hands on it? Thank you very much for coming. Our second proclamation is recognition of the annual sale of Buddy Poppy's by the Veterans of Foreign Wars to honor the dead by helping the living. I'll read that as well. Whereas, the annual sale of Buddy Poppy's by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. Whereas, VFW Buddy Poppy's are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas, the basic purpose of annual sale of Buddy Poppy's by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I Travis Shawnaman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do hereby urge citizens of this community to recognize the merits of the cause by contributing generously to the support through the purchase of Buddy Poppy's November 4th through 11th, 2019, for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored debt. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in the defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. We have a member of the audience, Mr. Harms, has a few things for us to hear. Please make your way to the podium, sir. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Yes, I'm with the VFW CC Corral Post 17. Veterans of Foreign Wars. We have Poppy Week every, a couple times a year. We do, we work, we have volunteers that go to Kessler's and go to Runnings and at Kens. And any kind of donations accepted, no matter how great or small. And we do it to help our, help veterans, you know, that are in crisis, you know, somebody needs, can't pay rent, or, you know, we, we build stuff for like, like trailer houses, we put in a floor. We do just stuff for veterans. Like if a veteran needs a gas card to go down to the VA, we usually do that, you know, so. Where we've been, Kessler's will be from November 4th to November 11th. And then, the end of the week will be Kens and Runnings, so. And it was started in, I was following the battle at Flanders Fields that they noticed poppies were growing where the soldiers were slain. And a guy wrote a program about it. Maybe next year I'll bring, you know, some information. I had, I've been at the Kessler's for the last six hours, so. Why, it's, I mean, people are very generous and we, we thank that. We also have, we also have awareness about the 22 soldiers who take their lives every day in the United States. And we've some of the proceeds for that. And, thank you.
Thank you very much for making your time.
You have any poppies with you?
Oh. Next week.
Okay.
Since no one has signed up to speak at the open forum, the next item to discuss will be the consent calendar. Oh, well, it skipped over you, Casey. I made it all the way down here. Well, no one did sign up, to be fair. Casey was officially added to the list. We have a quarterly report presentation from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Casey and Laura, thank you guys for making it. Sorry to make it appear that I was going to skip over you.
Thank you for having us. Again, this is our third quarter presentation on behalf of the Aberdeen Convention and Visitors Bureau and the marketing on behalf of the City of Aberdeen. All of this information will be emailed out to you following the meeting tonight, so you'll have access to those. If you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to us via phone or via email or stop by. We love it when people stop by the office. To dive right in, I guess you guys kind of know who we are and what we do and why we do it. Again, being the marketing agency for the City of Aberdeen, marketing the start of 100 mile radius and trying to go as far as we can with our marketing dollars, sometimes nationwide, depending on where that marketing entity might be, whether it's a sports magazine or a vacation travel guide or a travel magazine, we try to hit those entities. Giving you our third quarter updates as far as numbers and how those shake out. Again, we do have our two websites, which are brand newly launched websites. Visit aberdinesd.com and huntfishsd.com, along with our four social media platforms. Visit Aberdeen SD, Huntfish SD, Aberdeen Community Happenings Facebook page group, that's an open group, and then the CVB Events Notice Facebook page, which is a closed group. All of those, I'd be more than happy to answer questions on as well. It just, it gives us access to reach out to the public in general, visitors in general, and also privately with retailers and businesses, business owners, to let them know when there's large sporting events or conventions in town, so they can staff a little heavier. We do have two digital marketing, or I'm sorry, two advertising entities. We have our print advertising and digital advertising, which I'll let Laura go into right now and I'll follow that up with our website statistics.
Thank you again for having us. Quarter three is July, August, and September, so the beginning of that quarter is right in the midst of vacation season. So, we have great numbers to report. Nearly 3.1 million impressions, that means 3.1 million pairs of eyes saw something about Aberdeen during those three months. In the print world, we appeared in all of our year-round publications, but also added the Minnesota Vikings Yearbook, Minnesota Twins Yearbook, Pheasants Forever, Midwest Hunting and Fishing, and then we did a significant presence in the program for the Shrine Convention that was held this summer here in Aberdeen. So, we appeared in almost 1.2 million copies of print and for 2.3 million impressions just in print alone. Digitally, we appeared in the South Dakota Tourism email feature in August. That was a shoulder season feature. And that was emailed out to 600,000 email addresses. The South Dakota Department of Tourism also does a Great Getaways Mailer that we appeared in that goes to 175,000 households. And we continued with our digital campaigns through Kelo. Vacation, our click-through rate continued to be almost four times greater than the national average. And we were able to track 321 people having seen one of our ads and then setting foot in Aberdeen. So, that's really fun to see how that's increasing with the busyness of the season, of course. But also, just seeing that that, our number one referral continues to be the Great Life Suburban Lanes Family Fund Center, followed by Thunder Road in Sioux Falls, St. Paul Parks and Rec, and Sky Zone in Fargo. So, we're getting people from all over the place, basically, is what that's telling us. So, our efforts are working kind of everywhere that we're going. The hunting campaign through Kelo went mid-August through the end of October. We were able to track, through the first six weeks of that campaign, we were able to track 27 people visiting Aberdeen. And they were from Illinois, Iowa, Wisconsin, as well as South Dakota. So, we've got people that are responding to those ads early in the season as well. The number one referral in our list of locations is Shields in Sioux Falls, followed by Bass Pro Shops in Peoria, Illinois. I thought that was kind of random and kind of interesting. During quarter three, we did not have any hostings as far as bloggers or travel writers go, but we did host the Sales Director of South Dakota Magazine, Jessica Kniffen. Her time in Aberdeen gave her a better understanding of what we have to offer our visitors. And that may help entice the magazine to do a feature on Aberdeen at some point in the future, which is always good for those earned media dollars. Rooster Rush was in play during the end of quarter three and actually through the middle to the end of quarter three. We did some radio advertising early, earlier than we normally do, just kind of letting the public know that Rooster Rush is coming up. If you have any events, please let us know so that we can help promote those for you. We ran 110 radio spots on Hub City Radio and Dakota Broadcasting stations. Earned media, we were able to garner, a couple of bloggers responded and did some Instagram posting, also did a couple of blog posts. And so, that's a new way that we've talked about before here, when we've been here. It's a new way that we're trying to really connect with some of that social media influencing and our efforts are seeming to pay off. Other marketing and advertising tactics, we do still continue with our billboard at the Summit Corner. And we have partnered with the Chamber this year to put a logo on the ice out at the Ody. So, be sure and look for that when you go to the next Wings game. Conventions are always a big part of the market, excuse me, the marketing that we do as part of the CVB. Some of the larger conventions that were serviced was the Milwaukee Road Historical Association National Conference, that's coming up in two years, the Women's Business Conference, the Midwest Regional Youth Wrestling Duels, and South Dakota Fairs and Celebrations. Those are just a very short list of some that we did something for, whether we sent out a press release, whether we served on a planning committee, or just provided visitor bags for their conference. And then, to report on the Hotel Alliance, during quarter three, nine funding requests were received and all were funded. Those groups included the Aberdeen Carding Club, the South Dakota Trappers Association, Oktoberfest, South Dakota Fairs and Celebrations, Downtown Summer Concert Series, South Dakota Snow Queen Festival, Midwest Regional Youth Wrestling Duels, Ron Colly Cavalier Classic, and the Y Basketball Tournaments. Are there any questions?
I'm curious how you track if someone goes to your website and then sets foot in Aberdeen.
So, our marketing, our digital advertising agency, Kelo, that we work with, they somehow are able to track if you are at Bass Pro Shops in Peoria, Illinois, and you pull up your phone to check your email or to answer a text or whatever, you may see an ad for Aberdeen. So, of course, it places a little something on your phone and it tracks you as you come to Aberdeen. So, it's, it's all done through your cell phone. I'm sure Travis could probably explain a little more of the technical terms of how it works, but, but it, it tracks you from seeing that ad all the way through. And it keeps retargeting you too, depending on, you know, the level of retargeting that we are able to afford. You know, that determines the number of times that you're sent that ad again. And then, it tracks you all the way through and it can ping your phone when you come to Aberdeen.
Interesting.
Super, super creepy. But it's really interesting.
And she is right. It actually places a pixel on your, on your phone or on your website, on your, your desktop at home. And it tracks you based on what you're looking at and how does that reference back to what Aberdeen can provide? If you're looking at hunting gear, you might see an ad on hunting. If you're looking at, I don't know, a new kayak, you might see information on affordable vacations and, and it all plays into it. So, it's, it's Big Brother's watching, so be careful. Thank you. Rolling that into our website statistics, looking at the third quarter. The third quarter blew 2018 out of the water, which is good. For visitations, we had just over 70,000 visitations to our website. Page views, 81,000, downloads, 64,000, searches, just over 1,000, return visits, just under 10,000. The number one platform that people are searching for and finding out information on is their smartphone. They're all connected via their phone. Everybody's got it in their hip or in their pocket. So, that's, I guess, everything being mobile friendly, that is definitely the way of the future. You have to, you have to let that information be as readily accessible as possible. How did that relate to 2018? We saw 57% increase in visits, 37% increase in page views, and a 47% increase in downloads versus the third quarter of last year. And again, that mobile-friendly device being their number one resource. I touched a little bit on the social media ahead of time with our four social media platforms through Facebook. I have Layton's information here. He wasn't able to be here tonight because he was cheering on the Kansas City Chiefs. Apparently, that's a big deal, but they did win, so he's happy. Page views increased over second quarter. We increased 2.3% in likes. Page followers increased 2.5%. Page reach, year-to-date, we're up 20, almost 25%. Page impressions were up almost 20% year-to-date. And our video views are down just slightly. Instagram, again, where you're up almost 5% over twen, or second quarter. Twitter followers up almost a percent and Twitter impressions are just under a percent down. Facebook, Hunt Fish didn't track quite as well as the vacation side of things, just as our main focus at that time of year is vacation travel, as now we switch over into the hunting side of things. So, we did track some downtrends with page reach and impressions there. Followers, followers were up on Instagram. Followers on Twitter decreased just under half a percent. And impressions were just under 6%. But looking at our top performing posts for the third quarter, Brown County Fair obviously is the biggest draw in Aberdeen and the region. We had eight posts that were put out garnering a reach of 36,000. The Shriners were a big thing in Aberdeen as well, as we hosted the MSA Midwest Shrine Summer Session. But we also made it user-friendly. We put parade routes on our Facebook and social media where people could access those. And we did receive a lot of positive feedback from the Shriners themselves, from other communities, saying they have never seen parade attendance anywhere as they've seen in Aberdeen. So, that's a good, good kudos to us. Brown County Speedway is a top performer. NSU Sports, our 2020 Vacation Giveaway seems to be a top performer as well. Storybook Land Festival, South Dakota Film Festival was a good one. We had two posts that we put out. And one of them was just as simple as the Tin Man sitting with a bowl of popcorn behind some seats in reference to the South Dakota Film Festival. And everybody knew what it referenced and the engagement rate was through the roof. It was probably one of our strongest posts that we've ever seen. Along with that, here's some examples of some of the ads. I know this is real small. Like I said, this will get emailed to you. Blues Brews and Barbecues, Wings, Sizzling Summer Nights, Oktoberfest, Fair Week. The Tradition Hunting Magazine that just came out now is just flying off the shelf. It's just a membership directory. But the look of that, the nostalgic look of that, people are gobbling it up. Actually, we had some hunters come to our office and wanted to get some of those flyers so they could take back home. So, they searched us out just so they could have some flyers. We're like, here, take 20 of them. Please put them up all around your community. Some of the larger events that we had access to or helped with in 2019, spilling over to 2020 and 2021. South Dakota Arts and Education, Midwest Shrine Summer Session. The Aberdeen Carding Club is something to note. They actually got flooded out down in Brookings and they called us in desperation mode. They needed a place to go and, and we had what?
About a week.
As I say, a couple of weeks' notice to pull that off for their state championships, which were held in Aberdeen, so that's good. South Dakota BMX, we have Nurses, Nurses Association, South Dakota Municipal League, which some of you attended. South Dakota EMS Conference, that was just held this last weekend in Aberdeen. Actually, KSFY did some nice coverage with that, so that was nice. South Dakota Airport Conference coming up this weekend, along with the South Dakota Special Olympics. Tournaments held, hockey, soccer, lacrosse, numerous reunions. 2020, looking forward, we're hosting some hockey, Midwest Youth Wrestling Duels, Knights of Columbus Convention, Democratic Party, Democratic Party Convention, VFW State Convention, some under 14 baseball tournaments and the Trappers Association. But one other thing to note is Aberdeen had bid for the 2020 Gold Cup Regional BMX event. And you guys are nodding your heads, you know a little information already. We, we did not get awarded the Gold Cup Regional event, but we got awarded the National Event, which is even better yet. So, we're talking anywhere from 750 riders now has bumped up to 1,000 to 1,500 riders that will take place in August of 2020. So, the efforts that we're putting forth, the bid packets that we're putting together, you don't win them all, but when you do win some big ones, it's, it's definitely nice. And there's some other ones on the horizon, the AAU Wrestling, Wrestling Tournament in 2021, March. That'll be just as big as a state wrestling tournament as we've ever had. 2,500 wrestlers, under, was it under 12, I think? But it will be coming to Aberdeen, so that would be a citywide sellout again. So, we're, we're putting forth some major efforts, not only in social media, but in the conventions that we host along with those. Any questions on the social media at all? Before I bore you to death, moving on. Moving on, conventions and sporting events, as we've noted, all of our conventions, our services are free of charge, whether it's a mayor's welcome for the airport conference coming up or whatever it might be, visitor packets, some special cinch bags and a bottle of water that we're putting forth for the Special Olympics Tournament coming up this weekend. All of those services are free of charge. Many times donated, but many times come out of our budget as well and we're, and we're definitely happy to do that. We don't provide, as far as services go, we provide the same services any community in South Dakota provides. We just do it better. We take pride in, in the Aberdeen community and how can we go that extra step to make sure that those people feel fully enveloped in the, in the Aberdeen hospitality? And that's what we try to put forth. Some of the conventions that were held in the third quarter, you know, out at the Brown County Speedway, the Lucas Oil Events, the Sprint Car Series, Storybook Land Festival, the Shriners, Brown County Fair, the Carding Club, which I mentioned, Sizzling Summer Nights, State BMX, softball tournaments, and the South Dakota Film Festival, some of the bigger ones, just to name a few. How does that relate to visitors coming to Aberdeen? Anytime a visitor rents a hotel room in Aberdeen, they pay an occupancy tax, a $2 occupancy tax. So, with that being said, looking at 2019 versus 2018, June tracked 8.39% higher than 2018. July was up 6.34%, August was up 4.4%. So, the visitations are definitely coming. We're just happy to host them here in Aberdeen. Obviously, with some new accommodations going up, will make our job a little bit easier. How does that compare out to year-to-date? We're, we're tracking right on track to be above year-to-date as long as the fall fourth quarter holds strong. We should be above year-to-date. SIC codes, what that is, standard industrial classification, that's taxation that's held on lodging, eating, and drinking. And looking at the 2018 versus 2019, July was up almost 400,000, August was up 62, almost 63,000. September was down about 18,000, that was just for lodging. Eating was up 448, five, sorry, 548,000. August was down 137,000 and September was up almost 100,000. Drinking was up across the board, 158,000 in July, 16,000 in August, and 174,000 in September. So, how does that relate year-to-date? July was up 15%, August was down just under a percent, at .77. And September was up 3.3% year-to-date total tracking. Visitor numbers, you know, of course, we have our visitors that come to the area. We staff two visitor centers, the Depot, which we are housed, and then the Storybook Land Visitor Center out at Wiley Park in Storybook Land. Numbers were down a little bit for visitation. We had 18,481 people versus 15,878,000, sorry, 15,878. That could be related to how you enter the park. As you come in, do you actually go through the visitor center? Do you take that right-hand turn and get those kids out in that park as quick as possible? Have you been through the park and the visitor center before? Do you really want to sign the guestbook? We get a lot of daycares and a lot of school buses that come through and they may not sign in on the guestbook. That's where we try to use that 2020 Vacation Giveaway. Alan, you kind of gave us that idea for that, to entice those people to slow down and sign that guestbook so we can capture that email address and put a hash mark by however many people they have attending. And obviously, weather could play into that as well. If it's a wet spring, a wet summer, that could deter attendance as well. But we try to track everybody that comes through the door. Our visitor center volunteer staff out there does an amazing job, so. Any questions at all on numbers, occupancy, SIC codes, visitation? Okay, are we still got your attention? I got some new info, hot off the press, from South Dakota Tourism. They use a company called Arrivalist. And Josh, this might play into some of your questions that you have. I had them break down Aberdeen via the third quarter and Aberdeen alone. And what this is, Arrivalist is a company that uses the point-of-interest contract, the point-of-interest being Aberdeen and Aberdeen only. What is the traffic that comes to the area? And as you can see, those little pixels that they put on your phone, they can track you everywhere you go in Aberdeen. And you'll see hotspots, hotspots being hotels, hotspots being Wiley Park and Storybook Land. They can track you from the time you enter South Dakota to the time you get to your destination to the time you stop on your destinations on your way home. So, how does that translate in July? July alone, we have resident and non-resident traffic. And I'll get you these graphs and numbers as well. In July alone, for non-residents, there was just, there was about 14,000 trips that came to Aberdeen in July alone. And they spent an average of 21 hours and 58 minutes in Aberdeen and spent an average of two days in South Dakota. So, Aberdeen being their primary destination, wherever they came from, Aberdeen was their destination. They spent 21 hours and 58 minutes in two days in South Dakota. How does that relate? Where are they coming from? Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Fargo Valley City, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, Rapid City in almost, in Omaha, is how it breaks down. Now, once they're here, the cross- visitation, where are they stopping on their way home? So, this might give us areas to rebrand or retarget. So, once they come here, they're stopping in Watertown, Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Rapid City, Brookings, and Sturgis on their way home. So, wherever they're traveling from, Aberdeen is their primary destination. That many people are coming here, attractions in Aberdeen, and this is where they're stopping before they get home. Excuse me, August, 20,000 trips, 20,632 trips, 18 hours, 41 minutes, an average of one day and nine hours in South Dakota. Where are those people coming from? Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Fargo Valley City, Seattle, Tacoma. And, and we scratched our heads on that one too. But they think it actually has something to do with AGP. AGP has something to do with that Seattle Tacoma, Seattle Tacoma connection. Minneapolis, St. Paul, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, and Rapid City. Again, where are they stopping, that cross- visitation, where are they stopping on their way home? Sioux Falls, Watertown, Brookings, Pier, Fort Pier, Mitchell, and Rapid City. Looking at September. 18,423 trips, spending 15 hours, 32 minutes, and one day and seven hours in South Dakota. Where are these people coming from? Sioux Falls, Mitchell, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Seattle Tacoma, Fargo Valley City, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, and Rapid City. So, again, it really breaks it down. Where are these people stopping on their way home? Watertown, Sioux Falls. Watertown, Sioux Falls, Brookings, Mitchell, Sioux Falls Airport.
Why are you laughing?
Sioux Falls Airport and Pier, Fort Pier. So again, their primary destination being Aberdeen, but this information gives us, gives us the numbers. Where are they coming from? Where are the target audiences that we are already advertising to? Where can we change up our numbers to advertise somewhere different? And how can we retarget them on the way home? So, new information, we plan to have this quarterly as well, so. Any questions at all? Tried to keep it under an hour.
Appreciate you guys coming in, I think, oh, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just want to, no questions, because I'm already satisfied with what you guys are doing. You're doing a great job and you're communicating it with us on a quarterly basis. And the job you do is amazing, I don't know how you do it, I just know you do it. All the social media stuff that you guys do. I say that because a year ago, we promoted a Sherwin, my company promoted a Sherwin-Litten concert, a Christmas concert, and Casey pulled out all the stops and promoted that thing all over the Midwest. And it turned out to be a successful concert. Along with Plains Commerce Bank was a main sponsor of that. And we now have a nice little video as the Aberdeen visual, audiovisual team, Aberdeen Central with Wayne Hansen, recorded that concert live on November 30th of last year. And it will now be replayed on South Dakota Public TV on December 13th and December 23rd, I believe. But that's going to get statewide coverage and, you know, we have you to thank for that and, of course, Plains Commerce and Aberdeen Central, which their Acapulco Choir will receive the proceeds of this video once they put it on sale. So it was a success and I really thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. And a lot of the work that we do, I'm glad you mentioned South Dakota Public Broadcasting, they do some amazing stuff. You know, and there's examples we'd love to give, you know, like I'd love to have Carl play the little video excerpt of KSFY hosting the EMS conferences. You know, but it falls into next quarter, so. It's stuff like that that kind of, I know we're reporting quarterly, but there's a lot of stuff that crosses over. Our Rooster Rush activities, we start those immediately when we have a spare minute. And we push those all throughout the balance of the year. And again, everything we do is community-minded. We couldn't do what we do if we didn't have the community support and your guys' backing, so we appreciate your help.
Thanks a ton for coming in, guys, I want to also thank Leighton, when you see him tomorrow. I think he does a really good job with the graphics and
He does.
The response on your guys' contests online are always, are always very, very successful, so.
And our job to take those contests and drive them to the website. So while they're here, if they got any other questions or want access to other info, that's the house for it, so. Thanks for coming in.
The next item on our agenda is the Routine City Business Consent Calendar Items, A through E. I'd like to get a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
Second.
And has anyone any questions as it relates to any of those five bullet point items? Otherwise, I've got a motion from Remley and a second from Ronan. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got what was on last week's consent calendar, we pulled it out for new business item. We've got a license for residential building contractor Silas Wilson, it looks like you're here today, Silas. Possible approval or denial of the license. I'd like to mention that's obviously our responsibility to keep the community safe wherever possible, and it's also very important to give people a path to successful life after rehabilitation as best we can as a community. So tell us a little bit about why you're a good candidate for a contractor.
Point of parliamentary privilege, please. I was informed by reading these materials today that my former partner represented Mr. Wilson in various matters. He was at that time a member of my firm. And while I think it doesn't create a conflict for me with this, with regard to this, because the matters that Mr. Cogly represented him are different than what is before us, different from what is before us today. I've never met Mr. Wilson, I've never, I was not involved in his case, but I guess I would ask the city attorney if based on that, it would appear that I am conflicted from participating.
Excuse me, no, Councilman Ronan, two things. If I recall, the matter involving Mr. Wilson was, as far as we can see, was resolved in May of 2018. So we're well past the 12 months for a business client if we were using that. Also in light of the fact that you were not involved in representing him in any matter that's consistent with what you're dealing with today, then in my opinion, there would be no conflict. If you chose to, you may participate and vote.
Okay, and I guess I would ask the council that if anybody has an objection to me participating, I am happy to recuse myself.
No objections. I think you're good. Mr. Wilson, a little bit about why you're a good candidate for a contractor license.
Yes, I believe everybody has a letter from my probation officer. I realize I made a mistake in the past, I just hope that doesn't define who I am as a person. I've been, I completed everything I needed to do. I even went to intensive outpatient therapy and graduated in aftercare. I haven't had any violations or any trouble whatsoever since I've been incarcerated. You know, I'm just looking for a second chance.
Sounds good, what questions has anyone got for Mr. Wilson?
If I may, real quick, I'm sorry, I just want to add to that. I did receive a call from Mr. Carrolls, who is the probation officer for Mr. Wilson. And he has confirmed in fact what Mr. Wilson is telling you today, that he was a model, has been a model parolee and is doing very well on the program.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Sounds good, has anyone any questions for Mr. Wilson while he stands here? Mr. Bunsoness.
How often do you see your parole agent?
Right now, I'm down to once a month.
Once a month?
Once a month, I wasn't once a week.
And for the next year, will that be the case?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Ron, if there were some parole violation, would we take action on this license?
There's not necessarily a mechanism in place for us to be made aware of that, just so you're, just so the council is aware. Ordinarily, something like this is approved and that's kind of the end of it, unless somehow I learn of subsequent problems. I did not ask Mr. Carrolls, the parole agent, to provide me any kind of updates. So truthfully, this council needs to be aware, it's very likely that we would not be aware if there were any violations, unless they found their way into some kind of court filing that I somehow became aware of.
Can I say something?
Sure.
If, you know, if you need anything from my probation officer, he said he's more than happy to submit anything you guys need. So if something like this, if it's an issue, I'm sure, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I think, I think I would, I mean, I'm all about giving second chances, but, you know, I think if we should reach out to his parole agent and say if there's anything that comes up, we should be notified.
I would agree to do that, if the council approves this, I would agree to reach out and ask for that.
Sounds good. Mr. Lunsman.
I do have a question. I read through your packet and I'm also very much for giving people second chances. My question comes is that, as I read through it, and not to dredge up everything, but this is important to me anyway, is that you were found guilty of being habitual criminal? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I also see that, you know, you were recently released, not that long ago, actually, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, obviously, this is, my question is, is that if you're habitual and then you just recently got out, what gives us some satisfaction that you're not going to fall back into that with your past history so that we can make sure that our residential owners that were to hire you would be comfortable having them in your, or you in their home?
Well, the habitual, they went back 15 years for a felony that didn't even pertain to this charge. It was a gun violation, that, it was pretty much paperwork is what it was. So that's why they did the habitual. I mean, from that point on, I was a model citizen until I got in trouble in 2016.
And this, this is in relation to your trouble in 2016?
This is, 2016 is what we're talking about right now, that's why.
This is the end result of that.
This is the end result, yes. And while I was on, waiting to go to trial, I was clean for a year, and I was actually in treatment and just, I was a week away from graduating. And then I got sentenced.
So from the time of 2016 until today, you've had no other violations, no other issues or problems with the law?
Correct.
Okay, just to be, to be honest with you, up until that point, I was going to vote against. But with you having that much time, even though I know some of that would be incarceration, but if you, in my opinion anyway, is if you were going to slip, you probably would have slipped by now. So I will vote for this, for you to have that license.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I too see that it's very important that we give people second chances where possible and will support the safety of the community, of course. So I've got a motion from Johnson and a second from Ronan on this issue. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Rux. Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry, congratulations and good luck to you.
Well, thank you very much.
Next, we've got a public hearing and discussion regarding the tentative draft of the Charter Revision Subcommittee. Ron, kick us off with that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had warned the council some time ago that we would be putting this on for public comment potentially, with an emphasis on the compensation provisions. Just to review, again, we had a work session back in, I want to say, in end of September, on September 16th, and at that time, we reviewed the Charter Review Subcommittee's suggested changes. At that time, we also agreed then that we would have a public hearing, and this is the time and place for the public to come and provide any input that they would want. We also agreed that the emphasis on this first public hearing would be what, in my opinion, is the only provision that might have some controversy attached to it, which would be the compensation section at 2.04. Otherwise, if the council would like at the end of this, we can put it on for another public hearing to generally discuss this. And then as we close this conversation on this, I could also give the council an adoption plan that would sync us up with the potential June election, June vote on any charter revision ordinance, so. So what I would do is start out by bringing up, and we had placed on the council agenda with the Agenda Packet, I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to look at that, the work of the Subcommittee showing the red line, changes, revisions, and suggested proposed changes. And as we get into the document, it was at 2.04 that we saw, again, for purposes of tonight's discussion, the proposed change at compensation expenses, where there was going to be a deletion of that, again, somewhat unclear and ambiguous language regarding the effective date of any increase in a salary. Because of the circuit, kind of the circular language employed there, it would be a situation where salaries could only be changed at the end of each person's term, so we'd have times when, when we would not each be receiving, when each of the council members would not be receiving the same salary, they might be staggered salaries during their staggered terms. So what we have proposed here is at Section 2.04 to delete that language in the Charter section and to basically set the annual salary of the mayor and council members by ordinance, which is again what the council does every year in setting the annual salaries of all of the employees of this city. I think, if you don't mind, I'm going to go to the a couple of calculations and some worksheets that Lynn did along with Marie to try to show some historical wages. Again, the charter was passed in 2000, was adopted in 2005, and at that time, the mayor's salary was set at $15,000 and the councilor's salary was set at $8,500. And as we sit here today in 2019, that is exactly what you're receiving today. $15,000 for the mayor, $8,500 for the councilors. If the wages had been simply tied to the annual adjustments that were provided to staff, this is the table that would show what that change would be every year and what you would be at today if you had just tied it in to the annual wage adjustments. And you can see on the, in this column what those are annually and where you would be today. The mayor in 2019 would earn $21,198 and the councilors would earn $12,013. Using another calculation method, which is the Consumer Price Index, which I think is what the city of Sioux Falls is now using, and they tie that then to whatever the CPU is, utilizing that same, that same calculation scale, the mayor's salary today would be $20,288 and the council members would be $11,496. So we're talking a little difference of roughly $1,000 for the mayor and $600 for the councilors. So if the council were, had utilized the calculation of the historical wages for employees, then from, in the last 14 years, you would have seen a fairly modest increase in both the mayor and the counselor salaries. I will bring up one more statistic. And this again was put together with information that Lynn and his assistant were able to find. What we have here in the middle of the screen are what we're seeing today. I think this was put together at the end of 2018, but showing what other mayors and council members in other cities are receiving. And you can see that Aberdeen at $15,000 would be in the, again, the lower end of those ranges for the mayor. And the same is true for the city councilors, again, at the lower end of those ranges, so. We also have, and I won't put it up on the screen, but the council was provided with a greater detail showing comparisons between the cities. And of course, with the city of Aberdeen meets every week, many of these cities do not. Many of the cities that we're looking at here, the councils do not meet as often as this council does. And some councils have a smaller membership, obviously. Some councils have full-time mayors versus part-time mayors. But for purposes of considering that, whether by this council and/or by the voters, this is the kind of information that would help inform whether that's a, whether that proposed change to the charter is a positive change or not. Is there any questions? Great. I don't know that I, again, this is the public hearing time, I don't know if we have anyone here who is prepared to offer comments or input regarding this. I will tell you that we have had this on the website for well over a month. Not surprisingly, I guess, kind of disappointed, but we have not heard any comments from anybody. Maybe that's good, but I have not had anybody reach out to ask me for explanation on anything, for clarification on anything. So I don't know if the council is, if any council members are hearing anything out in the community about this, but I am prepared to answer any questions that there might be and, again, invite the public. You don't have to come to a meeting here to provide your comments, it's on the website. You can also notify me personally and I would certainly bring that to the council's attention.
Just for a point of clarification, if you were wondering where I received, where I took the numbers from as far as the Consumer Price Index, you, it's from the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis.
All right, no questions. We'll move along. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we've got to consider the purchase of a Caterpillar 289D3C3H2MTL skid steer loader from Butler Machinery for the Utility Department. Possible approval to purchase the Caterpillar skid steer loader from Butler Machinery, the amount of $63,656 from the Utility Department. Robin, tell us about that skid steer, please.
You recall last week, we did ask for an additional piece of equipment for snow removal for the Street Department. This one is a replacement of a current piece of equipment. We have had some metal fracture. It's obvious that the piece of equipment that we have is not suitable for the type of work we're putting it through, and we're looking to go with a little beefier piece of equipment, number one. Number two, we need something reliable for snow removal because we will be down some equipment from contractors. So we're, it's kind of a dual-purpose thing. This is going to be used in the Utility Department primarily, but it will be a heavily-used piece of equipment when we're not doing main replacement, things like that, for our snow removal operations. So, and that's part of the reason for the urgency. We did seek out a piece of equipment that would be readily available rather than finding something that we could wait for six months to find it. So, this one happens to be available right now, and it's through that NJPA source well process that we've talked about in the past.
Move to approve.
Second.
So, good. Has anyone got any questions for Robin as it relates to the skid steer? Otherwise, we've got a motion from Johnson. Was that you, Josh?
No.
No. Give it to Josh. Motion from Johnson, second from Reif. They get a roll call vote. Carl.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a change order number four, pay estimate number five, Millan Overlay Improvement to Jensen Rock and Sand. Possible approval of the change order amount for $78 and pay estimate in the amount of $76,642 to Jensen Rock and Sand for the Millan Overlay Improvement Project. Robin, you're up again.
The change order, while a lot of items, it just happened to balance out pretty closely where we're doing a very small change order for this particular item. Lot of extra work, and not a lot of extra work, but a fair amount of extra work to tie in the intersections along Main Street was the purpose for the additional asphalt work. And correspondingly, there was a little bit less approach work in the concrete side. So those two balanced out pretty closely. And really, what we're paying for on this pay estimate is primarily the asphalt work that was done, number one. And number two is going to be paying out the retainage that we hold. We hold 10% of that contract until we're satisfied the work was completed in accordance with specifications.
Robin, just out of curiosity, about what type of an increase in price would you say we're seeing for Millan Overlay this year versus previous years? Has it gone up pretty substantially?
No, actually, the prices have remained fairly stable the last few years, and that's primarily dictated by petroleum prices. Where we see the, where I really look bad on our estimation process is when petroleum goes way up because we have no way of knowing how the contractors are able to recapture some of those costs that they're going to have fixed in their, in their process. So if petroleum prices are down, we look pretty good. If petroleum prices rise, then we're in trouble.
Sounds good. Can I get a motion to make those payments?
Moved.
Motion from Lunsman and a second from Remley. Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got an executive session to consult with legal counsel for review communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation for contractual matters. So with that, before we go into executive session, I'd like to thank all of you guys in the crowd for having taken part in this wonderful celebration of Monday night services. And we will have to excuse you for the next short segment.
Move to go into executive session. Second.
Got a motion from Ronane, this second from Remley. Carl, can I get a roll call vote to move to executive session, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Take a brief break to clear the room. Ron. Ron. I might go inside. See, I got a book. I've never seen a good mail over here. This campaign, I don't know if it's worth more than 25 bucks. I might have to send it back.[1768.51]